Okay.
It's.
As ever on.
It's recording. Okay.
Called at order this meeting, and this is gonna be a fun one to moderate here on March fifth, twenty twenty five. Called at order the meeting and asked Mr. Juror for roll call.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Ms. Larimer.
Here.
Dr. Rufford.
Here.
Ms. Minkin. Ms. Roland Miller.
Here. Please stand and we'll pay the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We skip over the safety briefing since everyone's here with safety.
Just jump out a window.
It gets too hot. Adopt the proposed agenda. We have, I wrote it yesterday, thick agenda, but generally discussion, no motions, couple decisions to make.
Second.
Dr. Rufford, Ms. Larimer. Mr. Juror, roll call.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Ms. Larimer.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Yes. Now we'll move to three point one, community engagement events. Mr. Hostler provided PDF of some information about the current community engagement events. And so the first one is the, I guess we don't need to really discuss dates. We have been working in community engagement to create format for true open, anybody in the community will talk about, you know, we'll need to wanna reach out to some of the key stakeholders that we're in touch with to make sure that they know that we want them there. There's still some work to be done on this in terms of the questions and the format, but primarily it'll be at small group tables for specific questions with reporters, some reporting out, and then toward the end will be a time for an open mic for people that, you know, that came with things they wanted to say that weren't said at the small tables. We'll be collecting some demographic information, things like that. Mr. Hostler, do you wanna say anything about the facilitator?
Yes, thank you. So we've been having conversations as a board committee, talking about this event and, and planning it. So we wanted to make sure that we were making it the kind of event that we would want to get community feedback, give the community a voice, and so that, that is something that really was the focus behind this. So as we talk about it, you know, it really drives from the strategic plan, which states Perry'sburg Schools welcome and invite opportunities to engage and serve the community by encouraging consistent partnership and participation. So, you know, with that being such an important part of the strategic plan, the board has set out, you know, to, to really do this in a couple different ways. We have had the monthly events that have taken place. January was our first, you know, meetings at Way Library, and those took place across, over, over at Way Library. And we've tried to alternate the events so that the, you know, one month we will have a small presentation by district staff about something that's topical, and then the second half would be open for any open communication and dialogue. So we wanna make sure that in future information that we're sharing with the community, that we are really stressing that piece of it. And I know we had two board members that attended that, that first event. So the second event was in February. That was just an, an open invitation to come and sit. We had a board member in attendance. We had approximately nine individuals there. It was supposed to last an hour, and I think it went a little over two hours. So.
Oh, good.
And, you know, the, the topics ranged from levies to things that were, you know, on the reduction list to high school grading policies. So, so it was, you know, truly a, a conversation. So that's one aspect of what we're doing. The second aspect of what we're doing is inviting the community in to collect, you know, information from them in a setting that is specific to what the board wants to hear, you know, going back to that strategic plan, about the, the type of district that residents want, what's important to them, and how the schools are meeting their needs or in some cases aren't meeting their needs. So we have a, a local, a resident who has done consulting, worked with Root Learning, which is a company that does consulting with businesses. He's, he's a consultant on his own now. He's somebody that we've engaged with. We haven't done anything formally with them in conversations. And we're looking at this event where we would open the doors at school. We would have tables set up with moderators in each table. There would be a series of questions that the board committee would kind of arrive at, wanting to get information. The moderator would then run the meetings. You know, the questions and data would be collected from those tables, and at the end of the event, each individual would have approximately three minutes if they wanted to get up and say something that maybe wasn't reflected in their, you know, roundtable or, you know, any other comments. So we've got on the screen here, and this is from the, this is the attachment in Board Docs on the board agenda, but tentatively, these aren't firm dates, but tentatively March nineteenth at seven PM, and then Saturday, March twenty second at ten AM. So we need to work through the details of that. It was important to try to get to this sooner from the committee so that we can start to get this information processed as the board begins to wrestle with decisions here in the future. You know, so trying to do this before break, but certainly we wanna make sure people are aware of it. And so once we secure these things here in the next few days, if that's the direction, you know, we'll, we'll continue to work through that. So I had mentioned the district dialogue event, which we've had two so far. The next one is Wednesday, March twelfth, and, and so we're gonna talk about, again, just a portion of it, a little bit about, you know, school testing because we're getting into that testing window. And, you know, talk a little bit about that, and then we'll have the ability to, you know, field any questions that individuals may have. And the next one is drop-in, and that's April twenty-third, Wednesday at six PM. So also that's kind of where we are with those, with those items.
Couple, so I think Ms. Larimer and I are, are signed up to do that next open forum during the day. The Tuesday is the eighteenth, not the nineteenth. I'm assuming we mean Tuesday the eighteenth and not Wednesday the nineteenth. I think we had talked about it Tuesday. But I don't. Appreciate you. We lost long, but we're gonna make sure we. Tuesday, March nineteenth.
Yeah.
Tuesday, the eighteenth.
So that'd be Tuesday, the eighteenth, apologize.
And do we know what his, I'm a little concerned about the ten eight, end time depending on how long he projected. I didn't see it in his proposal of how long he thought these would be.
About an hour forty-five minutes.
I just wonder if we wanna start that earlier than ten. We're not, so in terms of people's availability plans to attend, I just wanna check with the board on, we would have to call these as meetings, obviously, if one of the two of us wanna attend, which I'm guessing.
The eighteenth I can't attend.
Yeah, I'm, I'm possibly not able to attend the twenty-second.
Well, these were dates that he was available. We haven't shared them back out, so he's got flexibility. And we're also a little concerned about, you know, if we're advertising in the Messenger Journal, that comes out weekly. So you have to kind of think, how many touches do you get out to the community? Social media is easy. Local media, print media, that's easy, but in terms of trying to hit all those avenues, you know, we want a little bit of lead time. So when we met as a committee, the actual dates were sooner than this. So, but if we want to bump that back out to April, we can circulate a date later today.
Do that. And I hate to say it, since they're gonna be similar and we're gonna have pretty extensive notes provided by the facilitator, I, I think we need to get them done before spring break now. We wanted to look at, I think Wednesday we ran the other people's scheduling issues.
Well, spring break's the last week of March, right?
Yeah, so it's right after this, so that's why we're trying to get them in, which means the twenty-second half of Perry'sburg will probably be gone, but.
It's always nice to go shopping on those weeks. Was, I mean, the, the dates are, the dates are fine. I just can't go on the eighteenth.
And I, I would assume that most people are gonna try to attend, and we'll call these as special meetings. I know I can't be there the eighteen. Hopefully they're not listening.
Challenge for, so are these meetings, are board members gonna participate? Or are you there to observe?
Probably there to observe, because I think if we're sitting at a table.
I would not be concerned about being called a special meeting. You're not discussing anything. So we don't want your basketball game.
And there's no specific agenda topics per se.
You guys are not discussing business. Everyone else is discussing, you're observing. Now, OSBA and I may have a different interpretation, but I think OSBA is wrong.
I would agree, I would agree with Randy on that.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I know we wanna be sensitive about open meetings, you know, sunshine laws and stuff like that.
Was it the, the, the elementary redistricting discussions were announced topics, specific topics. Throw those to be special meetings.
Right, okay.
That's, that's.
Okay. But it's, it's, according to the attorney, said OSBA was even worse when you don't have a topic because you can't call a special meeting when you don't have a specific topic. So you cannot call a special meeting for those.
And I would say if you do not have a specific topic.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Right. Any other questions, discussion about that?
So are we keeping the, keeping the dates then, so we get this in before spring break? Okay.
Because I think it's gonna take a week. I don't know how quickly he'll turn around. The report needs information, we're gonna want definitely, because we're making decisions about levies, which we're talking about.
And, and your question about, you know, the time of day on that Saturday, I don't know, but I know it would be nine and ten, but I don't have little kids that are chuckling around in the afternoons here and there.
Yeah, I was wondering if earlier is better, but it's about the deadline, it's about nine thirty. I mean, I'm just, you know, I, yeah.
I mean, they're what, they're only supposed to be an hour, right?
Hour forty-five.
Oh, an hour forty-five, okay.
As long as we're done, it's like church, as long as we're done by twelve.
Yeah.
Okay. The next one, I just, I added this to the agenda about our emails. At the retreat, we discussed the, you know, we had an OSBA representative leading that talked about kind of best practice is that presidents respond to emails, which the entire board has received. I had kind of started doing that, had, and then started adding a line as I responded to people saying, hey, don't expect to hear from everybody, because we know that we've also heard, well, only one person responded to me. And I thought, well, we need to start educating about why you're not gonna hear from all five of us. I started getting some pushback on that about that it was a controlling lack of transparency. Why are you muzzling other board members? I also know that that was not universally accepted by all board members. So we need to discuss that again. As I pointed out, I, I do think we have an issue, I'm concerned, that, you know, are we responding to everyone? I can't say that we are or aren't right now unless I respond to everybody, but then I don't know who else is responding. So I, I wanna be sure that we are responding to everyone. I wanna make sure that we're efficient with our times with the volume of email that we seem to get. I know that it's been higher because of the multiple issues, but we're gonna have multiple issues for the rest of this year. So how do we wanna handle that? I also think we, and we have in our board policies, a policy about communications where when we are communicating to the community, that we are supposed to state along the lines of, this is my interpretation, this is not representative of the board. And so I think if we wanna move to a position, which I'm, you know, I, other duties as assigned, I'm happy to share this duty. I have some other ideas about that, but I think we're gonna have to, I think we're gonna have to start using some of that policy language in front of all of our emails that state, this is, you know, this is a issue that I'm responding to, that the board has not acted on yet or fully discussed, and therefore just, these are my opinions and my perspective right now, not representative of the board. But I wanted to raise this again because there isn't full agreement on it yet. So how would we like to handle communications?
I would think that as long as we have a, a statement right at the get-go, or at least at the, at the very least, at the very end, but sometimes people don't read your whole email. So if it starts off, these are my opinions and my opinions only, not representative of the board necessarily, and then lather on as, as you so see fit. I, I think I'm off the top of my head, to my knowledge, I've only missed two emails that I've never responded to. I got a lot of kickback on it. I got a lot. That that was not, not a good idea to try and do that. Plus, I felt that it was way too burdensome for the president to be dealing with that and all the other things. And I know that that would have been one of Eric's favorite things to have to do, to add, add that on to his list. So I think it's just way too much to ask of the, of the president to throw that onto your list of things. So that, I mean, that's, that's what I ran across, and it's a simple fix. Just put that at the very beginning of every email that you send out, even if it's part of a thread, just keep it going. I rarely ever reply at all if I see other people on an email, just to keep it so it doesn't become a discussion. So we don't have to worry about that, but.
I, I, I think I would add to what you're saying, or make your request, or at least what I'm gonna commit to is, I always found it helpful when I was in that position to at least be aware, just myself as president of the board, being aware of what was being responded to. So a CC, would I be CC'd on these emails? Which is helpful to know what was being said, kind of what the questions were, what the positions of the individual was. We will end up, in the role as the board president, to disseminate it back as, as needed, if needed, to the other, to the other board members.
So do you do that to the president or to the vice president?
We do that to the president.
Yeah, like for instance, I, I started creating, I.
Trying to get it to you.
I created a list of everybody, and then I tried to figure out, has anyone responded to these? I had checked with Mr. Hostler, you know, who has actually received something back from us and who hasn't. So that, that's the kind of thing I would be interested in, as well as, hey, just, because we know sometimes people write to just one or two of us, right? And sometimes we know that they've copied and pasted the same email and sent it to all five of us, but I'm not aware of when that happens unless I've talked to you. So it would be helpful for me if, if you respond to any email that you've received, if you just copied me. That way it's not a discussion, there's just two of us still on there, it's not board, but I become aware, okay, so this person, and I can respond still as the president to say, as the president I'm responding, but I understand that Ms. Larimer has replied to you, please let us know if you have additional questions. And I don't need to think through the whole email, which would be a lovely thing.
I would feel a caution into there, because Tom and I get this as an email, they're gotcha, kind of questions. My dad said this, mom said this. I'm gonna put a wedge in there. And if you get those, I would suggest to blind copy, folks, if there was ever an email search, it still shows up in email search, blind copy. But you know that I'm responding this way as a gotcha question, so I want Tom to see my answer. In case, because he's gonna get the same question, and it was just the same page, I'll be answering, there's nothing answering exactly what you're saying.
And I think that's one of my concerns right now with multiple people potentially responding is that it's not an issue that we've discussed and fully determined or decided upon yet, that we could be inadvertently sharing very different opinions about the same topic at this point, so.
Two, it's important, if we have, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough piece to tame, because you have individuals who will send the same email to seven different people individually, and then you have other individuals who will send to a couple individuals, and then you'll have other individuals that will copy everybody. And so how do you track those and make sure that, you know, we're getting back? And it also, you know, you take that kind of time to respond, a thoughtful response, which I know, you know, the board member responses I've seen are always that way. It, it makes it a challenge if, you know, five of you are working on that thoughtful response, saying the same kind of thing. So part of it is just trying to do that in a way that makes it easier for you. And most importantly, make sure that we're not missing somebody who is, you know, wanting to have an answer, response. The other thing too is when you answer as an individual, sometimes it's helpful to say, you know, I am responding as an individual board member. This, the board speaks during its meetings, so that they understand that you're, so if there is that discrepancy, sometimes that's a good point to remind them that I'm responding to you as a board member, but not as the board. And, you know, people often, you know, don't consider that, so. So those sometimes, I know some of you work that into your responses, and that's always helpful to kind of.
So we're gonna reverse course. We're gonna say, everybody can respond to emails if they want. I am gonna say that I will continue to respond to all, but it would be, if, one, we're gonna agree to CC meetings, so I know that I don't need to make a three paragraph letter, I just can do a one paragraph. I know that you received a, Ms. Minkin wrote back to you. So if you are planning on, if you've gotten one, you're like, I wanna respond to that, please let me know. And then that, if you have, if I try to respond before you do, at least I know that you're gonna work on it, and I can backburner that one. And I'll send out that language from the policy one forty-eight, and it's just, right, you know, my views do not necessarily reflect the views of the board or that of my colleagues on the board. So that's the language of the policy, and I will send that out to everybody. Is that?
That sounds like a fair balancing of the fact that as a board, we only exist as a board gamble, gamble, we have individual opinions of the public. Wants to and deserves to hear individual's point. I think that strikes a balance.
And by the, and by the way, just so you know, on my end, if I get an email, it's just sent to you, I'm copying on it, I'm not responding because to you as board members. Now, if you want me to respond, I will, but I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay out of it to report to you.
I mean, that's how I've always been, I mean, as a professional doing business, if it's set to somebody and everybody else has copied, the person that's supposed to respond is, CCs are for FYI. So I, you know, we don't, like, I always get the same email from, you know, like, you think, you know, they email individual group members and not the whole group. I mean, that's always been best practice, though I don't know, you know, that I would respond to anything that I've CC'd on. Yeah, most of the time we're in, it's all the two. It's all of us, so. All right. Thank you for that discussion. Way forward. All right, moving on. Mr. Hostler has provided related, but two different pieces. One about the savings from the transportation boundary changes, and then kicking off a proposal of how to, now that we know, I, I think one of the most fascinating pieces to me recently has been that I have heard back in a couple different avenues now, that we had turned down the booster funds, and we weren't gonna fund anything that was offered, which I, I'm just like, wow. We, we had to figure out what we were, you know, gonna refund, like reinvest in, and then determine, okay, now what's left that needs to be about that before we could create a plan for that. So I just wanna put that out there. I wish people would just ask questions sometimes. So Mr. Hostler, we'll work, look at the reinvestment piece and then the safe plan.
So, thank you. So we had last month's board meeting, where, you know, saw the president, the recommendation, heard the recommendation regarding transportation and the, well, regarding the impact of changing transportation, the funds that could be saved by selecting one of the options that were presented for redistricting the elementary boundaries. When that happened, that board accepted proposal A, so that moved forward. So then we were able to kind of discern what those dollars could be coming back to the district. We gave a range, as you recall, and, and we'll get into the numbers here shortly in the presentation. But we gave a range because there's some variables. I know Ms. Pop, Ms. U-Pal, Mrs. U-Pal is working on the routes projecting for next year. So she, she gave us a, a document that, you know, we are starting to actually project out. We still have kindergarten registration for next year kind of hanging over our heads, so that could have an impact on what we do. So we don't wanna do a dollar for dollar, every dollar that we're projecting to save, because there's variables there, and we're still not clear exactly where we will land with, you know, kindergarten registration. But we did want to begin to identify those programs and things that we wanted to bring back by reinvesting those dollars that were projected to be saved by this move. The bulk of what you will see here in the next slides are really centered around the elementaries, because the bulk of the savings by redistricting the elementaries are there. However, there are some things that we did pull up into the other buildings and at least one other department based on feedback. We went to, Brooke and Don did a great job going out to the buildings and saying, you know, okay, what are, what is on your shortlist? So this isn't Moses from on high with tablets coming down. This is actually consulting with each of the buildings and saying, what are your priorities? What would you like to see come back? It was difficult conversation because they wanted to see a lot more coming back than was on this list, frankly, understanding that that isn't possible. So, you know, gifted, for example, came up, but to bring gifted back to the elementaries, that's four teachers. That is four hundred, over four hundred thousand dollars to do that. That would soak up almost all of the, you know, reinvestment savings. To bring it back across the district, we're, we're talking, you know, between six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. So it begins to, to get complicated. So we're very excited about, you know, sharing this information with you. Again, this is generated from the savings by redistricting. Thirty percent of our students will be attending a new elementary. We are re, we are reducing our elementary staff by four teachers. This is not because we have a hidden pot of money. This is not because we don't need it, or somehow they're being deceptive. This is being generated by those actions that the board took last month. So I think it's very important, because there's a concern that people will say, well, you threatened this, and then look, what happened? This only happened, the board could have said, no, we're not going to do these things, and these things would not come back. So just to give it kind of that framework. So we'll begin at the elementary level. We, we have, we had, last year we had three librarians that were working in each of the buildings. So this plan will restore those three librarians and a fourth librarian, because we are rebalancing the buildings. There's more equity, equity among the number of students in each building. Makes it a little more challenging to share staff when it was so lopsided. So we're bringing back that assistant librarian to the four elementaries. That gives students that opportunity for that library time with a person. Also, it allows us to, 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 you know, balance those, what they call encore classes or specials. So PE, art, STEM, music now can be better balanced, and because now. So PE, art, STEM, music now can be better balanced, um, and because now we have another option for kids. So those, uh, hundred and twenty-five kids can now be distributed among five classes versus four classes or three classes in some cases. Intervention tutors, though that is, uh, reading, you know, and or math, um, depending on the building's needs. Working, these are seventeen and a half hour teaching positions that will be working with students that need that kind of remediation. Um, so that was something that across the board, the principals were saying, you know, that's really important to us. If our mission is to ensure all students achieve their greatest potential, uh, this is, you know, one of those areas. And certainly there's other areas where we can't restore those things that meet that, that this was important. Safety patrol, um, so we're bringing back the coordinators that will provide safety patrol for next year. Elementary field trips were, were reductions in two areas. So you had the, the fees and the things that happen at the elementary buildings for the kids to go to those field trips. And then you had transportation costs that were also, you know, lined out. So this is bringing both of those back so that there will be field trips. Elementary principals made a great point, safety patrol, uh, student council yearbook, those are really important things for students, but it doesn't touch every student. Not every student is involved in those activities. Every student is involved in a field trip. And so that was kind of the thought process with that. Data facilitators, again, uh, because the reductions are happening, happening. We understand that we needed to, um, have additional funds available for existing teachers to take on more responsibilities outside of school, to work on data, student data, to determine what we need to do to move forward as a district academically. Because we're having these reductions, learning and our pursuit to constantly improve hasn't changed. So, um, student council, um, yearbook advisors, activity club coordinators, so that is one per building. So that is, uh, activities where, you know, it's up to each building. It could be, um, you know, the girls on the run, it could be the elementary, you know, days running cross-country. It could be another activity that they do. Uh, so we have an additional one that, that can be coming back. Um, and then retaining an elementary head teachers at each of the buildings, so this would be a stipend that would go towards having one teacher designated when, you know, just having that, that kind of leadership, uh, that, that, you know, among the teachers, making sure there is that connection. Across the board, the, the building leadership team was something that was recommended to be very important to bring back. But the cost of, of those, um, was a little bit high. Those are stipends that individuals receive to meet, to help with building level decisions. That would be possible to bring back at all buildings without, you know, we would be giving up things for kids. So that, something that we still are trying to figure out a way to make that happen. So these are the, uh, activities that are coming back to the elementary buildings. At HPI, um, we are adding a Wilson reading teacher. So we have a trainer for Wilson reading, which right now with the science of reading, um, with the dyslexia requirements we have is very important. We invested a lot of funds in that person to become a trainer to work with our staff, so we're not sending staff out and paying for that. We know that the Wilson trainer, um, that person is a, is a TOSA that works here. Uh, we've eliminated that position and, uh, we are now adding, uh, a Wilson reading position to one of the buildings. So fifty percent of this will be paid from Title I funds. You know, there's a lot of talk about will those be available or not, but we're operating under the assumption that things are as they are until we know otherwise. So, so, so we're adding a Wilson teacher, band orchestra and vocals for after-school performances, so those students get an opportunity to perform. Those stipends are, are intact, student council, and then bringing back four different student clubs. So they can determine what those clubs are. That's how it's set up in the contract, that they get to pick what those are instead of having it prescribed. At the junior high art show, the stipend that to have those art shows. These activities, uh, power of the pen, uh, is something that really attracts a different type of student. Um, and so that is something that was important to them. We wanted to bring back, uh, one, two, three, four, five different, uh, activity coordinating positions, those are clubs. So pep band, winter running, mock trial, and the two that will be determined by the building that they have now. And they're going to work internally with the BLT to determine which clubs are loans. Math counts is another activity, um, and then, um, you know, those, those, uh, rest of cheerleading and cheerleading, so bring those.
So to clarify, these are not full-time added people, these are supplementals or segments?
Correct.
Because I don't want somebody coming back with, you're, you're hiring, uh, ABC to know these are already teachers or staff on, on contract.
Right.
Getting paid additional duties for additional responsibilities.
So to your point, I'm, I was getting to this slide. With all the things that we just listed at the junior high, the total of those activities, where did I go? Sorry. The total of those activities, um, sorry. The total of things, the total of those activities was twenty-four thousand dollars. So that's not an individual, but what that does do is it does allow us to, um, bring back all of those activities. So when you look at the, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars and you're looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, that gives you an idea of we're averaging two thousand dollars and change for all of those activities. So, um, at the high school and then pupil services, uh, the drama club, the dance team, karaoke club, which is spirit club, publications, uh, forensics and, uh, the art show. So again, I think the high school leadership said these are kind of cross-section activities that draw, that touch a, a wide variety of students. One of the questions we asked each of the buildings was, outside of your building, what is the thing that you would like to see come back? That isn't part of your building or building level? And the number one thing kept coming back to pupil services and, and student services because that department, student services exclusively was, was dotted. And so, you know, the different types of engagement with students, um, and, you know, that, that was something that we wanted to pull back. So, um, the next slide, when you see the, the financial savings, this is actually, the, the left column was taken from the, uh, presentation that we did, uh, last month. So you see between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand and we're working right now to like pinpoint what that savings will be. The elementary, you know, we, we reduced sections and, and those four teachers. And again, there's an asterisk there because kindergarten could change that number depending on enrollment. Uh, but the total savings was between five hundred thousand and six hundred and thirty thousand. And you can see where that redistrict, so we're, we're about four hundred and twenty, you know, four hundred and twenty-six, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars with these items listed. Again, we don't want to be in a position where we're adding dollar for dollar back. But you can see that this first swipe is really one student center. It touches a variety of, uh, activities that, that, um, impact, you know, some of the students that that are, might not be their main thing. So I think, again, it was a, a team effort, this was getting feedback from those that are in the buildings that touched, um, the, the programs and the opportunities for students. And we, we, um, use their, follow their direction, given the amount of money that we could have. So, and again, it's elementary heavy because they're the ones that are, you know, that's for the savings, so.
What questions folks have about this or comments before we go on? I want to make sure, kind of stop here for a second.
Well, if we saved the four hundred thousand plus by, I mean, I see it as a net watch. Do we have to find four hundred thousand somewhere else now?
That's a great question. Um, so when we did the budget reductions, you know, projections back in October, we knew that we had hit like a six million dollar target. And then as we lay out the plan, um, you know, after the election, this is what we have to do. The redistricting and the four, and we have additional dollars that aren't included in this tally that, that we are also leaning on. The four non-instructional days, now those things there were not counted into that six million dollars. So, so now, to keep the math very simple, we have six million dollars, six point five million dollars because of the reductions with the redistricting. So we need to hit that six million dollars, the reductions that we have hit that six million dollars. But now we found this extra five million dollars through redistricting, thirty percent of our students. So we've used those funds to bring these things back, but we're still a little bit above that six million dollar threshold that we needed. So, um, so.
Using five minutes, five hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
You're on a roll.
Yeah, I don't think those coins are in a couch cushion for one million, five hundred thousand, sorry.
I mean, kind of set a different way, I'm going to be careful here, because I'm going to tell a narrative. If we would have redistricted and reduced hours years ago, and that wasn't the plan, because you're trying to build a new building, a new elementary school, all of that. But let's say we did do that, and said, let's forget about a new elementary school, let's just redistrict. We would have saved five hundred thousand dollars a couple of years ago. So the six million dollars with the cuts we would need, we did, we would only need to do five and a half million dollars. So this is now kind of working that math back in with that five hundred thousand dollar savings.
That's, that's a comment that I know, don't look at it, but one day I did. And it was some nasty Facebook comments about, well, see, they could have done this a long time ago and saved us all this money. But we were trying to build a new school and do it all at one time.
We did try, we did try to do this a long time ago, which is build a new elementary school. And we brought it to voters twice and it was rejected. That would have resulted in redistricting.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, so that.
And redistricting to support growth, not redistricting to.
Right.
And, and redistricting, we're keeping the fortables and trailers in place. Because as we continue to grow, we're going to be back into those. So it's not like this redistricting has eliminated the need. It has, as we shared in Oc, you know, in October, as we, or, um, last month's meeting, you know, this perhaps moves the need for an additional trailer a year out, um, from when we were projecting it. So, so, um, yeah, so we're still working through that, so.
Other questions, clarifications on this? Okay, moving on.
So the, 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 there's, there's, uh, so the, um, the next question is, you know, we have different groups that have come forward that said, you know, we want to offer, you know, funding to restore certain programs. So we knew with the redistricting that there would be an opportunity to perhaps re, you know, to, to bring certain programs back. Uh, because one of the things that we were very concerned about was, you know, some elementaries may be able to generate enough revenue to bring back many, many things and other buildings may not. So we wanted to really prioritize and try to, to balance those things. So students, regardless of what building they're in, get an equitable experience. So the background here is, of course, with the, the levy, the, the rejection in two thousand twenty-four, it created that thirteen point five million dollar budget shortfall. And so as we look at, how do we bring back some of those programs that individuals have talked about or groups have talked about? You know, it, we, we, we've kind of run into a, a couple of different issues that we needed to work through. So this is an attempt to kind of work through those issues so that we have that ability, um, to, to consider some things. As we, what kinds of things are we considering? You know, one, we're very grateful for those groups who want to step up and take action to restore programming. But we understand that those groups are saying, we have funds now or we can raise funds this year to make this possible. But those efforts and results vary from year to year. We see leadership change in those groups every couple of years and their priorities change in terms of what they want to do as well. So for our purposes, planning long-term as an organization, we need to know that we can rely on those funding streams, not just one year at a time, uh, but, but, you know, a couple of years, three years at a time. When you talk about scheduling, you know, um, you know, plays and, uh, you know, planning for those activities, having that ability to know next year, here's what we're going to do to secure the kinds of things we need to do, I think is important. You know, with athletics, we secure contracts for multiple years. And so it's good to know that we're not waiting on groups, whether or not the fundraising hits their targets, if we're going to offer that program. So, so that long-term stability was, I think, something that we really wrestled with in terms of that kind of commitment. Because the board has not determined what the next levy is going to be. So, you know, and the conversations that we'll have here shortly as we move on, um, we'll, we'll point to the fact that these funds may never come back. So are we relying for the next indefinite period of time for, for these booster groups to be raising the kind of money to operate these things? And so that's it, you know, that's what we're doing. Donations are designated for a specific program and the levy fails. Now we've collected funds and made commitments from groups to offer programs at a certain way when we may have to make wholesale changes. And how do we swear that at that point in time? So the board to say, we're, you know, we're never going to fund those things, so we need that money, that revenue stream indefinitely if we want to sustain those programs. Two, if the voters reject the next levy, there is another round of cuts coming. And how can we make those commitments to those groups, accept those dollars and then say, okay, we're going to offer freshman teams, but now we're cutting these other sports? Or if we cut the freshman teams again to save the varsity, now do we, you know, you get into a lot of tricky things. Programs like sports and theater have strong booster group parents and supporters, other areas, and we wanted to create other pathways. If other groups want to step forward, try to do things. And, and so this could be replicated in, in some ways or allowing this to happen. You know, with a, a variation of this depending on the program. The other thing that we're worried about, we kind of touched on it last time, is, you know, we've used the description that the patient is still on the table. If we do not pass a levy in November, if the PI levy goes down in sixty-two days from today, that's a one point six, one point seven million dollar gap that we will have to close. And there's, there could be further cuts coming, and that's not threatening, that is just stating the facts. So, so we are still in a, in a spot right now where the patient is still in critical condition. It's not been stabilized and we don't know what that stable patient is going to look like. So until that time, how do we plan for, for now and for the future? And, and do it in a way where, again, people in the community say, well, there you go. You know, they threatened this, but then automatically these things come back. And that is always a tough thing to balance. But if there's an opportunity and a pathway to bring it back, that's good for kids. And that will always outweigh what, what the negative, you know, people will say, that somehow this is wrong, that we're striving to find a solution to do that. So we've created the sustained access fund for extracurriculars and that's the safe. And, and it's, you know, we're, we want to create a program where we have that stability, where we can count on those funds being there to offer those programs, you know, by the district. But we also understand by, by the plan that we're proposing to generate those stable funds, it could potentially knock families and students out of their ability to participate in those programs. So we wanted to create a system where there would be a safety net for those families so that any student who wanted to participate had the funds to do that. We do that now, but by increasing the participation fees that we'll talk about for students at the high school in theater and in athletics to cover the cost of these programs to restore them, we know that there will be some other families that will be impacted. to cover the cost of these programs, to restore them, we know that there will be some other families that will be impacted by that. So one, it's sustained, it ensures programs have a, a reliable funding model. So by what we're proposing, you know, the district collects those fees, the fees come into the district, and we can count on what those dollars are. Um, and, and, you know, that's there. The access piece, we're striving to guarantee any student that needs those additional funds is able to go to the school's foundation, which already does this, so they have a mechanism in place. So anybody who wants to donate, and those booster groups, we hope, will be donating those dollars that they've committed to restoring these teams, the health of this, and, and also the, the, the program, um, and trauma. And, um, so we have those clear mechanisms, and we want to find, you know, that we're, we're doing this. So how it works is, you know, families will, already are paying an athletics and participation fee. We are proposing to increase that participation fee for a dollar amount to, to restore those athletic programs. In theater, there is no participation fee, but we are proposing to have a participation fee for those that are involved in theater to cover restoring the Winter One Acts program. Um, that, that avoids us having to rely on the, the ups and downs of outside organizations, parent groups, for fundraising year to year for those programs, their sustainability. But we, we, we graciously want to accept those funds or direct those funds so that students who might be closed out of this have a pathway to do these activities. So accepting donations to fund freshman teams, uh, Winter One Acts, um, is, is something that concerns. The misallocation is not inappropriate, it's just, you know, dollars going here into this pot instead of this pot. And how do we make sure that we're putting the funds where we need them to make sure that we're, we're doing this? We haven't determined the levy amount as a, as a board. And so that can change what we need from those groups, and this, this sidesteps that. If donation fund programs, um, again, voters, we talked about that. So this ensures the students receive support, stable solutions, um, maintain the message that these donations, you know, in this program doesn't, you know, doesn't mean that we don't need that long-term stable funding where it's needed most. So, um, you know, so, so this is something that, uh, participation fees, financial assistance. Um, we want those groups to contribute, uh, to the SAFE program where, where we're creating this, this safety net. So in, in this information, there is kind of a, a layout. Um, it, it ensures, strives to ensure students have access to these opportunities regardless of their financial circumstances. And, uh, we believe that this provides that kind of structure. Um, and then, you know, it's, it is a short-term solution because, again, the patient, further cuts could be looming depending on the outcome. And I know we heard commitments from those groups to make sure that we were going to work hard to, to do that. So the costs, so freshman sport teams, roughly seventy thousand dollars, uh, a year annually to keep those teams going. Um, we have one thousand and eighty-eight athletes that are involved in high school athletics. So that amounts to an additional sixty-four dollars, uh, per participant to, to make up that amount, um, which brings it to two hundred and fourteen dollars, uh, per participant, per season. It was going to go from seventy-five dollars, which it is today, with the reduction plan that we presented in October, it's going to go up to a hundred and fifty dollars. Now this will be an additional sixty-four dollars onto that. The Winter One Acts, um, it's nine thousand, roughly nine thousand five hundred dollars. There's two hundred and seven students. That number fluctuates depending on the type of musical that they're offering. So this spring musical has many more participants than last spring musical. But based on this spring's musical, two hundred and seven students, it's forty-six dollars, and we're looking at, you know, introducing that fee for those families. Um, it does shift the individual and family max. This is proposed, and we want to do a little more number crunching with this. But it follows the same pattern. Last year, the max was a hundred and fifty dollars for an individual, so if you play two, three sports, you pay for two. Uh, and then if you have multiple children, it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So this, you know, this would change that formula. Um, we were at seventy-five dollars per participant, uh, this year. Uh, the quick snapshot of what we have, uh, in the NLL, Springfield is a hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, Se- uh, Slovenia is a hundred and fifty dollars per season, Bowling Greens is seventy-five. They're on the ballot and they're talking about eliminating some programming there. And Anthony Wayne is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per participant. So it gives you an idea of, of where we are. So, so that, that is a, a, a quick summary of that, um, program.
Questions?
Don't even know what to ask.
I, I really appreciate that there's a way to do this across the board. Um, because as you said, groups change as your kids out of school. You know, we tend not to, you know, contribute funding. Um, and there are some other, you know, like, like in here, just talk about different programs.
We're, we're not gonna discuss this at this point. Questions, any clarifications? Otherwise, we're not gonna get to our agenda.
I think my, my, one, what would be the next steps to advance the SAFE program? All right, or specifically, what is, what do you mean from the board?
I think for us, um, the questions that individuals may have, um, you know, as this information goes out, what the feedback is. Um, and, and, um, you know, because we want to, um, provide this information to families and those groups now. So, you know, so based on, you know, for the feedback, we'd like to move forward with, you know, this, this, this plan. And, uh, you know, so that families can begin to, to make decisions because we know that, you know. Again, we were never cutting freshman sports, and there were some people that were, were, if my child is a freshman, they're not gonna be able to play sports at Haysworth High School. That, that wasn't accurate. It was freshman sports teams. Uh, and we have a handful of those teams. Um, you know, baseball, basketball, boys and girls, volleyball. Um, you know, and, and freshmen still would be able to participate in those teams. But, you know, for the other programs, there would be no change. So, you know, dependent football. So there, there would be an opportunity for those students to still participate, but it might limit the number of freshmen that would have access to those um, programs where they do cut, obviously. So feedback is important so we can process and move on and, and, you know.
So does this come for board approval, or is this an?
I think we would have to, I think we would have to get approval on the fees, um, so that, so that would be.
It's the, 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 the coaching stipends, right, obviously.
The question I have is, I'm a little concerned about, I'm not, I mean, I understand the need for a, a maximum expenditure by a family. Uh, is the SAFE program designed to make up then that difference? Uh, let's say my child is in all three theater productions, fall play Winter One Acts musical. I'm therefore only gonna have to spend ninety-two dollars instead of a hundred and thirty-eight. Um, will that extra forty-six dollars to make sure we're actually covering all these expenses be coming from the SAFE plan?
Uh, the SAFE plan, as it's laid out, would be drawn from, um, you know, to cover the family that says, my child's involved in all three. I don't have the ninety-two dollars. That's what we'd be drawing on. The difference of the additional forty-six dollars, um, we have talked about how that may impact ticket fees and other ways generally of how we can raise that difference. So SAFE would be directed towards getting students the access to that opportunity, not necessarily supplementing the district in those costs.
Defusing the cost of the family right now.
Right.
Okay.
And, and the, the maximum an individual, uh, this is something that we're still going to be, there could be some updates on this because this was just the first kind of brush, and we want to run the numbers carefully as we get into that, so.
Other questions, feedback?
Proposal worth pursuing, I would say. Yeah, nice.
Thank you for coming up.
Yeah.
With a solution that hit the many different concerns we have. Uh, once again, please get any additional questions, ideas to Mr. House. And is this gonna be shared back then with booster groups or?
We wanted to start here with you to see if this was DOA at the port. There's no point in going out and, you know, um, so if, if, you know, what I'm hearing, you know, based on your feedback in the next, you know, couple of days, hopefully, um, then we will begin to, to reach out and schedule those conversations.
Our, our next topic is the levy discussions, but eight o'clock, we have still fifteen minutes, because I promised eight fifteen, but we're gonna be in. I don't know, Mr. Drew, or should I?
I can show something, we'll, we'll. If you want, let me, um, I see if, like, what would, or, or, why? All right, you can see that I know. All right, so let me go here first and zoom in a little bit.
So we don't have this.
You don't have this.
Okay.
You, you have it, but you don't have it. Because this is, this is November, this was the November, November forecast, okay? I thought I'd start here. So, and this is before, there really no change, we, we got the reductions in there, but we don't have anything in the budget for traction, I think. So this was actually November. I want you to, so I, in November, recall, I had penciled in fourteen million dollar property tax levy, which by the way, um, would be today's valuation, nine point nine two mils. Okay? Um, if we would have, if we renewed that levy at thirteen point five, it would've been like nine point six mils, it would've dropped, you know, as we expected. So, 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 no, look at this, this number here. So that's fifteen million dollars, um, end of cash balance, June thirtieth, um, twenty twenty-nine. And I took, I did this, there's all sorts of, obviously, um, options on, um, you know, levy options, right? You know, the amount, the type, all those things. So Susan asked me, what would happen if we split, let's say, a point two five percent income tax and, um, um, the rest in property tax? Which by the way, would be just slightly over six mils. That still gets us that total of fourteen million, but, oh, this is one I wanted to show you. This line here is the impact of income tax. So if you pass the income tax in November, you're not gonna see full collection on that until twenty twenty-eight. Okay? Obviously, the, and, and, I may notice the difference between these two is fourteen million. But I still shot for fourteen million, but you see the, you know, we, in a year, we collect, we're full collection on the property tax. The impact is almost four million dollars on the cash balance. So income tax, if that is a choice, the board must make, just know that the collection time is gonna be delayed. Right? And just for, just running numbers, um, and, and Susan had provided some census numbers. I think these numbers are a little bit low for our median for the area. But a hundred and five thousand dollars income in a hundred and six thousand dollar home, that total tax would be nine hundred and thirteen dollars versus the property taxes of a thousand and sixty-six. So about a hundred and fifty dollars difference. Um, that's just to put it in perspective now, a state has our median income at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Right, so it, it, the gap is gonna be closer than, than a hundred and fifty dollars. But anyway, as a starting point, that, that's where we are, that's at fourteen million, right? So going back to this one, you know, so, uh, think about it, if you go less, obviously, it impacts, and I'm looking, this is four years out, right? So I'd have to do something different if I went years plus. You know, it's where do you want to end up? If you end up here, I believe we have, we have a ballot, because in, in the next year, we're out of money. Until twenty thirty.
And maybe this is the nine point nine two, oh.
This is the, this is.
The city of tax model.
And this one is the nine point nine two mils.
Okay.
And you can see, if either state or area is the same thing, and, and without a new levy, we end up, um, next year with thirteen million, so we're okay. So following year, that we're out of money. So without a new levy, we're out of money, and we probably have fiscal watch at that point. Maybe fiscal, more because we have a negative in the third year. So that's kind of, you know, looking at the bottom line, and obviously, there's lots of pieces and parts. So as a discussion, I think that's, is that appropriate, Susan, Matt, which you wanted to, to get started here? So four, so four or five years, and, and going back to the, this scenario, if you're four years, you're, you're, fourth year, you're asking, you're asking, in this scenario, we're probably, we're good for five, you know, you're good for five years, but.
We're back on the ballot.
What's that?
Back on the ballot.
Yeah. So, again, I mean, I think you have to do a conversation about income, now, this is a traditional income tax, right? That's what we have right now, half percent, traditional. So that means everyone, whether you're on retirement income or paycheck, you're paying the tax. Right? Um, most districts pass an earned income tax because it, it, it helps, it doesn't impact those living on, on pension incomes as much, because it's not a paycheck tax. But we'd have to change that half percent to a, to a, uh, earned income, nor, you can't have two income taxes. You have, you have.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So you can't have a traditional and earned, you gotta have traditional or earned.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah, so obviously, follow-up question is, what does the other, the earned income tax factor look like, isn't it?
Well, here, here's the problem, if you go to earned income tax, well, we know, right now, we're a half percent, generates about ten and a half million dollars, right? You go to, if you go to, to get that same amount of money on an earned, you gotta go three quarters of a percent. And here, if you couldn't do a quarter percent, you'd have to go a half percent, because you gotta do a quarter percent increments. So it, it actually do, if you, if you did that, you'd go three quarters and a half, and that would reduce the village ask, but it also delays the collection.
Delays the collection, you gotta make that up somewhere, somehow.
Yeah, so you got all that going on. Now, I can run as many scenarios like this as you want, I just ran these two simple ones. But, you know, it, I think, in my mind, board, you got a couple of tough decisions. Number one, you wanna consider the income tax. If the answer is yes, then let's, let's play with those numbers. If the answer is just too complicated, or no, or whatever the answer is, then that's fine. I just need to kind of have direction. Um, chances are, and this is based on some previous work, is that, you know, at the median, those above the median, property tax is better, those below the median on these things, income tax is better, right? So if I'm lower income, higher property value, I want, um, income tax, right? If I'm higher income, especially with a really high income, I want property tax. So it's, if there's no easy answer.
Yeah, what I'm, what I need to think through is a question, we can discuss later, you know, how to think about where we wanna end up in four or five years to help drive that decision.
Let's add to that, we have no idea what kind of monkey business is gonna end up happening by June thirtieth down at the state, right?
That's right.
So that's, that's a monkey wrench into anything that we're thinking about now.
Yeah, because, because the one thing that you have, the state, I mean, you do not just have state funding. We have, we have twenty mil floor discussions, we have pipeline devaluations. All that would impact, if you, if you look at this, our property tax collection, you see, you know, a little bit increased year to year primarily due to, we mean, the twenty mil floor. Right? So if they add, if the, if they, if they change the calculation, and we have to add our fixed sum levy into that twenty mil floor, then some small increases we get here go away. Now, it's not, not huge amounts, but they're significant, right? So all those things are playing into this at this point. And for us, it's not gonna be millions, but it will be hundreds of thousands, right?
Yeah, a lot of the work that y'all did trying to get these programs back could disappear with the swipe of the pen down on Columbus.
That's the order of magnitude, right?
So I think the, the question is, is what, if we are to make a, at least tentative decision by the end of April, so we have three meetings scheduled between now and then, we could, of course, schedule a special meeting just on this. We, we need to start narrowing down what these scenarios look like. And right now, this is, I mean, this is helpful to get especially, I think there's a lot of conversation out about the traditional, I think people think our traditional income tax is an earned income tax. Don't know how we can better start communicating out. There's a lot of expectations, I keep hearing about using income tax, but that delayed collection, especially in the immediate, is a, is a concern. But how, how, I, I wanna raise this to retreat, I'm gonna keep raising it. How are we gonna make a decision about this? What else do we need to know, what scenarios do people wanna see? I, I still, and I, you know, one of the scenarios I kind of threw out there, what, what does it look like for us to do more reductions knowing that not only the state funding is so volatile right now, and, and not in hugely significant ways, but in ways that would cause us to cut another half a million dollars a year, possibly up to a million, depending on what they do with the different aspects. Along with, we know that there is gonna still need to be an elementary school or some type of housing for our children that doesn't look like trailers to be educated in. So that, that, that continues to be a concern for me, is how do we create that space in the future for facilities? And I don't know how to get at that.
Yeah, and the issue you have is the state is gonna look at these numbers, right? So before any new money, we're, now, we're gonna end the year probably a little better than this. You know, maybe, so, you know, I'm confident, but still, you know, nine million dollars next year of spending deficit, twelve, fifteen, you know, it's not five hundred thousand dollars in reductions at this point. And if we don't pass a, if we don't pass levy, or we don't pass levy, then you gotta look at some significant portion of, you know, this nine, this tur, this twelve point four million to get us a, have us a cash balance that's survivable.
I'm sorry, what is that line that you're showing us?
This is our, our deficit spending, this is our cash balance, and this is our cash balance at the end of year. So we should end this year a little more, like, you know, a little more than this. For twenty-two million, next year, thirteen million, and then we're down to a million, which essentially is zero, right? Because that's, that's just a margin, that's, you know, that's within the bounds of error.
This is what it looks like without any levy.
Without any new money. And this is not taking into account the negative stuff that we're hearing already.
All right, since we're at time, I'm gonna, I think the next, if, if finance could begin to get a handle on how we can purchase.
This was helpful to start staging some of those thoughts.
There, there's, there's two things, I think, that we're on time, but we got a five or four cash, which is not cast in stone, but it should be a, a, a reasonable effort, right? But that's, then you have the actual, you have some time after that to make the decision, but you only have a month, right?
I think that, that guide is what we're looking for.
Yeah, so.
And speaking of the state, just, we don't have time to run through this right now, but six point one, we have to share feedback to the state about all of these different changes that they might be making once again, pullback from funding public education even while they're funding more and more non-public education. It's one line that I read, funding other types of education that aren't public education certainly is within the state's right, but it shouldn't be done at the expense of public education. And there's information there that Mr. Host learned, has provided of how we could start providing feedback and how we could encourage other people to provide feedback to the state about the importance of public education and the impact that we could very soon be down to where they're only supporting our public education at ten percent of our costs while our costs are very difficult to consider. So there's that, it's eight sixteen, I went a minute over, I apologize, but with no objections, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. No objections, the meeting's adjourned.
Other than I was about.